Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and we'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. And we'll be led in a prayer by our Commissioner Turner, and then we'll let in the pledge by Commissioner P.
Let's pray real quick if we could. Let's just, Commissioner Matt Murphy, several of you know him, passed away. And if we could just have a moment of silence real quick to remember him and his family, and then I'll go into the prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for the opportunity for us to gather here and do the people's business, Lord. It's a privilege that we don't take lightly, and I just ask that you be with us tonight, Lord, in our conversations, that we may honor you with our actions and our words and our deeds towards our citizens and our fellow commissioners, Lord. We think of the Murphy family tonight, Lord, who suffered a loss. We're thankful for the model and the example that he set as a citizen servant for this city and for this county, and we thank him for those types of actions, Lord, that have encouraged others to serve, and the imprint that he's left on this community that will be lasting forever. Thank you for the veterans, Lord, that we honored this past week on Veterans Day. Many thousands are still overseas serving us, Lord, who have families that they've left behind to protect this country and to serve us, and we ask that you cast your shield of protection over them, and that you watch over them, and that you protect them and keep them safe, and may we honor you again tonight. I ask this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
[inaudible] Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
20 present.
All right, thank you. We have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. Mayor, I am going to give those minutes in order and move their approach.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Serrino. Anyone have any additions or corrections? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we have a time set aside for public comments, and we have three people that wish to speak to us tonight, so I ask you to come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments, and try to limit those to three minutes, please. First, we have Beth Duffield from our Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Beth Duffield. I live at 2707 Duke Court here in Murfreesboro, and I am the Vice President for Workforce Development at the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to come tonight to personally thank the mayor and the county for their support in our recent effort to recruit mentors for the Tennessee Promise, and I just wanted to give you a quick report on that program. As you know, it's the governor's flagship program for the Drive to 55, focusing on providing two-year of last-dollar scholarships for our graduating seniors. And I'm very excited to report that we had 2,500 seniors across the county register for this scholarship program. That is about 75 percent of our students graduating this year, and we have 355 mentors, of which 55 of those represent employees of the county, either the county offices or through our school board. So I'm very thankful for that. And before you is a copy of our Tennessee College Guide. This was made possible by contributions from our utility companies and a couple of other sponsors, and it is a new document that provides information for our juniors and seniors on being more college-ready. There's information about the Tennessee Promise, as well as information about all of the public and private universities, two-year colleges, and TCATs across the state of Tennessee. So I wanted to bring you one of those tonight. And I just wanted to make a couple of points regarding the Tennessee Promise and the impact that I believe it will have on our community, not only in terms of providing a better workforce, which is near and dear to my heart, but in terms of providing financial support for our community in terms of tax dollars. Just a couple of studies that have been done recently. One by the Milken Institute, "A Matter of Degrees: The Effect of Educational Attainment on Regional Economic Prosperity," which was produced in February of 2013. Two key findings. They said adding one extra year to the average years of schooling among the employed in a metropolitan area is associated with an increase in real GDP per capita of 10 percent and an increase in real wages per worker of 8.4 percent. And they gave the example of Danville, Virginia. Average years of school in the metro rose 1.1 years to 13.18 from 1990 to 2010, and this boosted the real GDP per capita by 12.2 percent, or $3,440. And then a recent study that has been commissioned by the Mind and Marketplace Organization that is being done by the Business Education Business Economic Research Center at MTSU related to STEM jobs specifically, which are very needed in our community for advanced manufacturing, logistics, healthcare, and IT, our four big industries, that if we add 3,600 new STEM jobs, that will increase wages and salaries in Tennessee by $1.823 billion. So moving 2,500 people from low skill to high skill by programs like the Tennessee Promise and the Reconnect Program that the governor will be proposing this year, the realization there is $506.5 million in additional wages and salaries to the Tennessee economy. So we can extrapolate that, what that could mean for Rutherford County is very significant. So I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of our efforts at the chamber through Destination Rutherford and our workforce development efforts, and we are having our annual workforce conference tomorrow. If any of you have a few hours tomorrow morning and would like to join us at Embassy Suites, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, very much. Okay. Next, Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Save the Constitution. It seems to me that the recent election on November 4th sends a clear message to us that citizens of Rutherford County, Commissioners of middle Tennessee counties, and Tennessee legislators, in a coordinated effort, must work with Congressman DeJurelle and other Tennessee congressmen to join a nationwide resurgence of constitutional conservatism that will guarantee the restoration of financial solvency and citizen self-rule throughout the United States. The root of our problem originates from agents who are active in the federal government with the goal of destroying our constitutional form of government and replacing it with a socialist dictatorship led by the financial elite of the United Nations. This subversive infiltration of the federal government has been accomplished in a semi-secret manner by agents from Metro Headquarters, from the NML, from the TML, and by Metro-type policies. Congressman DeJurelle seems to understand that this present administration leads the way in this unconstitutional movement. DeJurelle has stated that he intends to put a stop to the president's unconstitutional abuse of authority. Our congressman also supports a federal law, HR 4138, adopted last March, which permits the House or Senate to authorize a lawsuit against the president for failure to enforce our nation's laws. In fact, by signing executive orders indiscriminately, the president is bypassing the Congress. He does not have authority to make laws. Only the Congress has the power to legislate. My friends, the November 4th election was the day when Tennessee began to fight to preserve our God-given constitutional freedoms. I hope you Commissioners will take part in this fight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Susan Allen.
My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Stones River Crafts Association to thank you once again for passing the proclamation in September designating American Craft Week in Rutherford County that is going to culminate next weekend with the annual art studio tour on Saturday and Sunday, November 22nd and 23rd. I've handed, I've given you a couple of handouts tonight. This one is generally about the tour, and the second one is our postcard mailer that we sent out, probably about 10,000 of these, to people in Rutherford County and around the state. And I'd like to, and it has the names and addresses of all the participating crafts people, of which there are 10 studios this year, two new ones, Logan Hickerson on Betty Ford Road with his wonderful woodworking, and Sam Rowe with Warm Glass and Precious Metal, and she's the first craft artist we've had from Smyrna. So we're trying to branch out and make this a bigger annual event. So all told, with all the guest artists we have at our studios, there will be 40 artists, both 2D and 3D, that you can see next weekend at their studios and also see how crafts are made right here in Rutherford County. I'd also like to draw your attention to the back of this card that lists all our sponsors. We've never had so many people supporting the studio tour, and I'd like you to notice that Mayor Burgess is on that list, and Shane McFarland is on that list, too. So follow their example and come and support the studio tour. And for those of you who would like more information, visit artstudiotour.org. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Commissioner Turner, elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner P., before we do the noters, Commissioner P. has...
I'd like to make a motion that we add to the list of noted candidates.
Right, we have a motion to second. Commissioner Jordan, any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we've added that person. Mr. Turner.
Thank you. Including that addition, Commissioners, you'll find in front of you a list of approved notaries. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All right, any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to announce an alternate vacancy on the Beer Board, announce vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board, announce a corner vacancy. Steering would like to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board, and Steering would like to announce a vacancy on the Conservation Board to fill the unexpired term of David Mitchell, and that term will expire on February of 2017.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, we'll start with unfinished business, of which we have none, so we'll move on to our reports by our standing committees. There is a report, a monthly report, from our Purchasing Committee. We need a motion to approve that report. Mr. Johnson has made that motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schaefer, anyone have any questions on that? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. So we'll start with our Budget Finance and Investment Committee. Commissioner Jordan.
Item J2A, we have four general fund budget amendments. From the Circuit Court Clerk, increased expenditures data processing services, $15,000, and decreased expenditures unassigned fund balance, $15,000. From the Sheriff's Department, we've got the Justice Assistant Grants, the increased revenue for law enforcement grants, $33,345, and increased expenditures law enforcement equipment, $33,545. We've got in the pay adjustments, which we've been working on for a while, on the sergeants and the sheriffs, the jail, the workhouse, and detention. At the sheriff's office, we've got sergeants, $52,420, and data processing personnel, $1,200. At the jail, we've got sergeants, $12,900, and related benefits. At the workhouse, we've got sergeants, $8150, and related benefits. At juvenile detention, we've got sergeants, $7,055, and related benefits. I believe that includes 56 employees. Adjustment rolls back to July 1st. Pause, we've got committed for health and welfare, well, we've got a decrease of $6,500, and that's going to other supplies and materials and data processing, and that's resolved this 13th day of November. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, Commissioner Jordan, get a second. Did anyone have any questions? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you. It's, I believe this came before public safety a couple of months ago, if I'm not mistaken. And for those who didn't attend that meeting and didn't attend the budget meeting, a brief explanation of those salary adjustments would probably benefit most of us. It's been our history in the past to frown upon making adjustments from unassigned fund balances during the year. We prefer that those happen during the budget process, and this didn't happen during the budget process, so a brief explanation of why that didn't happen and why this is a good idea.
There's a lot of questions in that. It was discussed, but I don't believe it formally came to the Public Safety Committee. I think the sheriff had spoken individually to different commissioners about some of the issues that occurred from individuals who were moving from a corporal to a sergeant. And when we started this, it was one of those unforeseen things that happened, and two instances, I believe, that for the individual, taking on the additional responsibilities of a sergeant based on his path, ended up making $100 more. So it really, that, a year, $100 a year for taking on the additional responsibility, you know, that was, it's not right. And this was a way to try to solve that problem with the pay plan. And so if you remember, we had 14 pay grades, we extended it to 56, and what we did with this position is just move it one subgrade from a 25 to 26. So...
Sort of a simple explanation is, really, that's what we should have done when we readjusted those pay tables, but it was a pretty complex undertaking, and that was a bit of an oversight on, I guess you could say, me, our HR Director, and even our finance Director. So this was a technical correction that really, you know, we should have done, it was an oversight, and it's just, it's made this a lot more equitable in the scheme of things, because we just had those two positions too close together. It was not appropriate.
And I don't think, you know, we really saw it in the beginning. You just saw it as we have worked the plan.
All right, any other questions? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Mayor, we've got a couple of scumming votes. Mr. Cook, Commissioner Jernigan, Mr. Kaplan.
All right, Mr. Kaplan is not, he's absent, so now...
[laughing]
Now everyone has voted that can vote.
19 yes, 1 no. Motion passes.
All right, thank you, then. Please continue.
Item J2B, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department Assets Fortressure Fund, $27,363. Confiscated Drug Enforcement, $15,000. Of confidential drug enforcement, $15,000. And other equipment, $12,633. Resolved this 13th day of June of November 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, and a second from, who's going to do this for me? Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner P. Any questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, Mr. Piercey, have you voted? His device is not responding. Where is Brad, please? There we go. Now all have voted. Record the votes, please.
19 yes, 1 abstained. Motion passes.
All right.
Item J2C, Road and Bridge Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Road and Bridge Fund be amended as follows. Increased expenditures liability insurance, $30,000. Decreased expenditures crushed on, $30,000, to provide money to fund extra liability claims. Resolved this 13th day of November 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan again. Any question? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Piercey. All right, record the votes. Thank you.
19 yes, 1 abstained. Motion passes.
Mr. Johnson?
There was a malfunction somewhere along the way. I voted yes on the previous one, and it showed abstain. I don't know what happened. I beat the fire out of the show.
Okay, so Mr. Brad, would you check with him? There have been, the last two votes, there's been an abstaining, that he thinks maybe it's him. All right, so continue on, then, Mr., and if that being the case, Mr. Spence will, Mr. Johnson will record your vote as yes on those two abstains, if that's all right. All right, Mr. Jordan.
Item J2D, Resolution Authorizing $4,275,000 Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds for the Health and Education Facilities Board. Whereas the Health and Education Facilities Board of Rutherford County approved a resolution authorizing issuance of not to exceed $4,275,000 multi-family housing revenue bonds at its October 2014 meeting. And whereas the proceeds of this bond will be loaned to Green Meadow Tennessee LP and will be used for acquisition and rehabilitation of a 112-unit multi-family housing facility in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the resolution of the Health and Education Facilities Board of Rutherford County for a bond issue not to exceed $4,275,000 be and is hereby authorized, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this 13th day of November 2014. And I will remind everybody that this is just passed through. The county has no liability, no cost, no anything. We're just a conduit for them to be able to do this. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner P. All right, are there any other questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes, please.
19 yes, 1 no. Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Item J2E, Resolution Authorizing $3,795,000 Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bond for the Health and Educational Facilities Board. Whereas the Health and Educational Facilities Board of Rutherford County approved a resolution authorizing issuance of not to exceed $3,795,000 multi-family housing revenue bond at its October 2014 meeting. And whereas the proceeds of the bond issue will be loaned to Rutherford Woodlands Tennessee LP and will be used for the acquisition and rehabilitation of a 96-unit multi-family housing facility in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the resolution of the Health and Educational Facilities Board of Tennessee, of Rutherford County, for a bond issue not to exceed $3,795,000 be and is hereby authorized, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth and at length verbatim, resolved this 13th day of November 2014. That's just like the one a minute ago. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a second from Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions on that? If not, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, Mr. Jernigan. Hey, that's good. Now record the votes. Thank you.
20 yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. I believe you can go home, meet dinner now. Resolution authorizing application for assistance to firefighters grant for fire and rescue. Whereas the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department has been made aware of an assistance to firefighters grant program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which will require a match of at least 10 percent. And whereas the purpose of the assistance to firefighters grant is to help firefighters and other first responders to obtain critically needed equipment. Whereas the Fire and Rescue Department seeks, requests permission to apply for grant funds in the approximate amount of $500,000. And whereas if said grant is awarded, the Fire Department intends to purchase 45-minute air packs to upgrade the volunteer departments. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the assistance to firefighters grant, resolved this 13th day of November 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Piercey, a second, and others? Any questions? All of you, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Oh, there you go.
Now, record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item J2G, Resolution Accepting the Highway Safety Grant for Sheriff's Department and Related Budget Amendment. Whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department has been notified of a grant award from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for a teen driver highway safety grant in the amount of $24,961.72, requiring no matching funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the teen driver safety grant in the amount of $24,961.72. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for the period beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue, $24,962. Overtime pay, $4,545, and the associated benefits. Resolved this 13th day of November. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Schaefer. Anyone have a question? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item J2H, Resolution Approving Contract Extension with MTSU for Health Department. Whereas the Rutherford County Health Department entered into an agreement in May of 2014 with Middle Tennessee State University to administer the program known as Smart Moms, and whereas the agreement is due to expire December 31st, 2014. Whereas MTSU wishes to extend the contract agreement to December 31st, 2016, due to delays in the county receiving funds from the state for the program and securing the original agreement with MTSU. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute the amendment to the agreement with MTSU. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim to extend the contract until December 31st, 2016. Resolved this 13th day of November 2014. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Turner. Anyone have a question? If not, please cast your votes. If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item J-2I, Resolution Authorizing County Archives to Apply for Tennessee State Library and Archives Grant. Whereas the Rutherford County Archives Department has been made aware of a grant through the Tennessee State Library and Archives, which requires no match. And whereas the Archives Department requests permission to apply for grant funds in the approximate amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars. Whereas if said grant is awarded, the Archives Department intends to employ part-time staff to work on microfilm project of old tax and deed books. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Tennessee State Library and Archives for the grant. And further, if awarded the grant, the county mayor and all other required officials be authorized to accept it. Resolved this thirteenth day of November, two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Any questions or comments? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record, not yet, excuse me, I'm a little fast. All right, record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan there. Okay. I apologize for being three minutes past six-thirty for these public hearings, but we were on a roll there, so I thought we'd finish. We have three rezoning requests tonight, and the first rezoning request is fourteen-dash-A zero-ten. The applicant is Mr. James A. Sweat, located along Forest Lane. Existing zoning is residential medium density, and the proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of approximately point-eight-one acres. And Mr. Demossi, you may explain more fully.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This first application involves a piece of property along the east side of Forest Lane, really the southeast side. The applicant currently operates a lawn care irrigation business immediately adjacent to the subject property, and would like to rezone the subject property for future expansion. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, which has been included with your agenda materials, although he has indicated that he has no immediate plans for the construction at this time. The previous zoning resolution and map, which was in effect prior to two thousand and thirteen, showed this property, as well as this entire block bordered by Forest Lane, Hooper Street, Scenic Drive, and Old Nashville Highway, as being Zoned C-two, which was a commercial designation. Staff wasn't able to determine when that was first put into effect, but when the county adopted its new zoning ordinance and map effective January first of two thousand and thirteen, the existing commercially-used areas were zoned for commercial services, which allowed them to, well, they would all be allowed to continue anyway, but put them in the proper classification, while the existing residential uses, their religious facility, a church that's located there, and a vacant property, which is this subject property here, were zoned RM, which is residential medium density, since that was the more appropriate zone at that time. The Planning Commission didn't really have a whole lot of comments on this application. Staff also recommended approval of that. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Demossi? All right, thank you then. There being no questions, we will declare this public hearing with this request, rezoning request fourteen-dash-A zero-ten. The public hearing is open. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this request, this is your opportunity to come forward and give us your name and address, and make your comments. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, I don't see anyone rising to come forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. And I will make note that Mr. Kaplan, it's in his district, he's not here, so if one of you other Planning Commission members, may be appropriate if you would make the motion regarding this request. Mr. Phillips?
Since Mr. Kaplan, Commissioner Kaplan's not here, I'll make a motion to approve with all Planning Department staff comments.
Second, Commissioner Kooch. Now, any of one else have any further questions? All of you then, in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you very much. Zoning request number two, on behalf of Mr. Dale Taylor, located at thirteen thousand, one hundred and forty-two Highway ninety-nine. The existing zoning is residential low density. The proposed zoning is commercial services on a site about one-point-four-two acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Highway ninety-nine. This application comes before you tonight as a result of a zoning enforcement action on the property. According to information submitted by the applicant, Taylor's Colors, which is the name of the business, is a small, family-owned and operated business on the property that specializes in paint and light body repair. The work is completed in an existing building located on the property. The applicants bought the property back in two thousand and ten and have operated their business since March of two thousand and thirteen. A complaint was made to the county zoning enforcement office in August of this year. The applicants had placed a portable sign on the property, which staff feels is probably what precipitated the complaint in the first place. The applicants met with staff soon afterwards. Staff originally thought that the business could be appropriate as a major home-based business, which would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and not to this body, but automotive and vehicle repair establishments are not permitted as home-based businesses. So after speaking with the applicant about it, staff advised either they would have to change the scope of their business so that it would meet the standards for home-based businesses, or they could possibly ask for a rezoning of the property. They wished to keep operating in their current manner, so they went ahead and asked for the rezoning. They do plan to continue living on the property. That would be a grandfathered use in the commercial services zone. Residential uses aren't permitted, but since it's being used in that manner now, they could continue to use it in a likewise manner. The Planning Commission did have several questions about this application. Most of the questions really concerned the potential impact the business would have on the property, as well as future expansion plans. Staff explained that any expansion of the buildings on the property would require an engineered site plan to be submitted for staff review. There were also concerns about any open storage, which staff explained would not be permitted in a commercial services zone that would have to be screened storage. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, after discussion and the applicant answering questions, did recommend approval by a vote of six for and one against. The applicants are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from Mr. Demossi? Okay, then, thank you, sir. Therefore, we will then declare the public hearing open with respect to rezoning request fourteen-dash-A zero-eleven, on behalf of Mr. Dale Taylor. If anyone is here in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak for or against this application, it's your opportunity, so I'll give you an opportunity to come, give us your name and address, and make your comment.
Hello, my name's Dale Taylor. My address is one-three-one-four-two Highway ninety-nine. I'm the owner of Taylor's Colors. I just wanted to get up here and say hello and thank you for everything. Thank you for letting me be in the community, and this family's lived here on this location for a long time, and I hope to, y'all will pass, be letting me run my business. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm the one that can answer them. So, nobody had any questions for him, so I just thought I'd get up here and give you all the opportunity, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Does anyone need any information from Mr. Taylor?
Sir, I'm so...
Sir, is it in a subdivision, Mr. Taylor?
No, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you then.
Thank you.
Is anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this application? I don't see anyone else wishing to come forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion concerning this application? Mr. Reed?
Mr. Chairman, I move for this rezoning request with staff comments.
Have a second?
Second, Commissioner Turner.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Now we have a rezoning request fourteen-dash-A zero-twelve, on behalf of Mr. Chris Hillis, located off of Shelbyville Pike. The existing zoning is residential low density. Proposed zoning is light industrial on a site of approximately ten-point-four-five acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the east side of Shelbyville Pike. The Planning Commission considered and approved a final subdivision plat on this property at their September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen meeting. The applicant desires to rezone about ten-and-a-half acres, which is noted as Track One on the proposed plat that has been submitted with your agenda materials, on the property to light industrial in order to operate a small-scale sawmill on the property for lumber production. No other improvements on the property are really anticipated. The property is currently zoned and surrounded by RL zoning. However, there is an existing concrete batch plant almost immediately adjacent to this property, which was approved back in two thousand and seven, and is currently zoned for heavy industrial use. As far as any comments from the Planning Commission, they did have some concerns and questions about the proximity to existing residences and any possible sound effects from the operation of the sawmill. Staff did let the Planning Commission know that any activity would be required to abide by the performance standards in our zoning ordinance, which does include noise standards. The Planning Commission, after discussion, ultimately did recommend approval of this unanimous, of this application by unanimous vote. The application, the applicant, excuse me, is present, and again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Demossi? All right then, thank you, sir. Therefore then, we will declare the public hearing open with respect to rezoning request fourteen-dash-A zero-one-two. And if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for or against this application, this is your opportunity to come forward and make your comments, give us your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, therefore the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion considering this project? It is in Mr. Jernigan's district. Mr. Jernigan has made a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second, Ms. Cook and Mr. Reed and others, I believe. All right, are there questions or discussion? All right then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demossi.
Thank you.
All right, we will continue on with our other standing committee reports. There is no report from our Health and Education Committee, no report from Property Management or Public Safety. We do have one resolution from Public Works and Planning Commissioner Jernigan.
Resolution is, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county commissioners approves the abandonment of the drainage easement previously adopted on tax map one-three-eight partial thirteen-oh-two Thompson Road, and the same be deleted from the official list of recognized public drainage easement. Resolved this thirteenth day of November, two thousand and fourteen. I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Piercy. All right, we have a motion on this to abandon a draining, drainage easement, and we have a motion, a second, so any questions? All of you in favor of this, then please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. We have one resolution from our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and call on Commissioner Kooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Steering has one resolution for your consideration. It's a resolution to approve the piles, rules, and regulations. Originally, the resolution was to be forwarded to the legislator, legislators, for the, to amend the private act. After legal counsel looked at it, it was determined that we do not have to amend a private act, that state law gives us authority to regulate animals. Also, wording was in this resolution to, in the future, if we wanted to develop an environmental court, that we would have the authority to do that. However, that would require an amendment to a private act, so that was also taken out. The environmental court was not anything that we was going to do immediately, but maybe years down the road, so we was going to put that in the resolution so that we wouldn't have to go back to the state. So that was taken out. So this is the resolution. Whereas the rules and regulations pertaining to control of animals in Rutherford County, Tennessee, of the Pet Adoption and Welfare Services Department of the county, attached hereto as Exhibit One and incorporated herein at length as set forth verbatim, has been determined to be in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the rules and regulations pertaining to control of animals in Rutherford County, Tennessee, of the Pet Adoption and Welfare Services Department of the county be, and the same hereby are adopted for and on behalf of Rutherford County, and shall be the rules and regulations used by the Pet Adoption and Welfare Services Department of the county effective immediately, resolved this thirteenth day of November, two thousand and fourteen. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Phillips. Are there any questions? All right, if there are no questions, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kooch. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to bring before this body? Commissioner P.
Yes, this weekend, this Saturday, November the fifteenth, Ketchikan Volunteer Fire Department is having a ham breakfast between six and ten, want to invite all the public out. Thanks.
Thank you, and Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Mr. Jim Baker and the IDB for sending us, I guess through the mayor's office, what the IDB has approved with the four companies to keep us informed.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any other business they'd like to bring before this body? If not, then, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.